Thank you for coming to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, July 24th, 2012 at 7:00 PM. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, is there any public input this evening? Anybody from the public who'd like to come up and speak? Anybody from the public? Okay, no one from the public. We'll move on to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Dr. Domingo.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Lozol.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Present.
Mrs. Principay.
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. And item number five, agenda number five is consent items. A warrant number forty-seven in the amount of $179,004.40. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dr. O'Leary.
Actually, do we have any, sorry, do we have any discussion or Mr. Wiggins would you like to?
No discussion or consent agenda.
Okay, there's no discussion, but Mr. Wiggins, would you like to explain?
These are warrants that the, actually in these particular cases, these are warrants that a majority of the committee assigned.
Okay, thank you. So roll call then.
Dr. O'Leary.
Yes.
Mrs. Principay.
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Yes.
Dr. Domingo.
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Lozol.
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, passes. And for number B, or letter B, warrant number forty-eight in the amount of $5,252.07.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mrs. Principay.
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Yes.
Dr. Domingo.
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Lozol.
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Agenda number six, approval of minutes, regular school committee meeting, June 25th, 2012. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a second. Are there any changes or amendments or any, any updates on the meeting for June 25th, 2012? If there are none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Woodruff.
Yes.
Dr. Domingo.
Abstain.
Mrs. Donovan.
Abstain.
Mr. Lozol.
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Abstain.
Dr. O'Leary.
Abstain.
Mrs. Principay.
Abstain.
Three yes, four abstain.
So the minutes are not approved. For item number B, regular school committee meeting for July 3rd, 2012. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, and a second.
Second.
And a second. Any corrections or errors to the committee meetings on July 3rd, 2012? All right, roll call, please.
Dr. Domingo.
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Lozol.
Abstain.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary.
Abstain.
Mrs. Principay.
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Yes.
Four yes, three abstain.
Thank you, minutes pass. Item C, the reorganization meeting for July 3rd, 2012. Do we have any emotion for that?
So moved.
A motion, second?
Second.
Thank you, any corrections, errors? Okay, if we see none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Lozol.
Abstain.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary.
Abstain.
Mrs. Principay.
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Yes.
Dr. Domingo.
Yes.
Five yes, two abstain.
Thank you, minutes are accepted. Agenda item number seven, reports. Are there any reports this evening?
There are no reports.
Thank you. Item, agenda number eight, presentations. A, West Street School Oil Spill Update. Mr. Como.
Mr. Como is here this evening to give a presentation for having come to the podium. He'll bring up today where we are with the oil spill.
Thank you. Good evening. On July the 7th, the Saturday, I get a call at 10:30 in the morning from the fire department that they were in the building at West Street and there was oil on the boiler room floor. Their quick response saved us a great deal of time and expense locating that problem as quickly as they did. We assume we lost about 300 to 310 gallons of oil. They notified the DEP right away after they called me. I called the cleanup company and then I called our insurance company to make sure we're covered. And they in turn called a company called Cushing, Jamalo and Wheeler, who is their environmental consultant. They oversee the whole project, make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, putting in the correct time and so forth. So they've been on site since day one. I also called the tech repair to repair the service. Within two hours of calling, from the call I got, everybody was on site and working on solving the problem and cleaning it up. They had to go down into the catch basins and check those out. I called the DPW to come in and open up those basins for me so that people could look at them. I was out of town when this happened, so I called in one of my maintenance personnel to come in and oversee the project for the day. And Monday, after everything, they cleaned up the bulk of it. On that Saturday, they came back on Monday, this Cushing, Jamalo and Wheeler, and started some test boring in through the concrete floor of the boiler room and some test boring outside to determine how much oil was lost out into the groundwater or out into the ground itself. They determined that there was oil in the groundwater and they were going to need to excavate the flooring of the boiler room. So where we stand right now is they have, if you go by West Street, you'll see a thousand gallon tank out there. They're pumping groundwater out and filtering it, filtering the oil out of it and disposing of it right now. They're waiting on the DEP to give them permission to excavate around 200 yards of soil and be able to excavate it and deposit it somewhere else and have it transported. So as soon as they get that call, we've already had an electrician go in and reroute the electrical wires that go underneath the boiler room floor, so those are out of the way. And I'm assuming by the end of this week or early next week, they'll be in there cutting the concrete and starting to excavate that soil and then get everything back together. And I've given them a deadline of September 1st that the bulk and all the construction work is out of there. I'm sure we'll have monitoring wells there for, you know, months to follow, but there should be, no reason why school can't open. Right now, there's no odor in the building, not even in the boiler room. So it's pretty well contained. They have fans in there blowing the air out as well as, you know, as the water being pumped out. So we're in, we're in pretty good shape. It could have been a lot worse, the way our system is set up. We had 6,000 gallons in there. If it wasn't detected right away, we could have had a real mess in there. So we got very lucky. I commend the fire department how quickly they responded and were able to figure out exactly where it was coming from and get on site and shut it down as fast as they did. So that's where we stand. Does anybody has any questions?
Thank you for coming this evening, Mr. Como.
Sure.
My first question is, what actually happened?
We have-
There wasn't really a spill, but what was the cause of the spill?
The boiler room is set up, it has a pump system. It pumps the oil out of the tank through lines, goes by all the boilers, and then it goes back into the tank again. There's a series of pressure gauges along the way so they can determine what the pressure is. One of those gauges, there's like a bellow or something inside it and it ruptured and it started leaking out from the base of that gauge. Happens not that often, but it does happen.
Are those gauges maintained on a regular basis?
Actually, they were, about a month and a half ago, they were all replaced except for one, that one. The company came in and they said they're going to replace all the defective gauges. And I'm assuming at that time, that gauge was not defective. It was operating, so they didn't replace it. But all the other ones were replaced except for that one. But it's not something that you routinely just go around and take the gauges out and replace them with new ones. I've seen gauges, we have some at the high school that have been there since, you know, the 60s, still functioning properly.
And just a follow-up question, I was just, how does the fire department know that that issue took place? Like what triggered them to know that there was an issue at West Street School?
They detected oil or substance down at the sewer treatment plant. And so they, our treatment plant, called the fire department to see where they could locate it. At the same time, there was a house on West Street that called that said they could smell gas in their, in their, in their house. So when they came there, they said, no, that's not gas, that's oil. And they just quickly thought, okay, who's got the biggest tank of oil on this street? And they went right to the school, right into the boiler room and shut it off. So they, they acted very quickly and they were just, it was, it's nice to know that they know the town, know where the buildings are, what's in these buildings, to react that quickly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody else, any questions for Mr. Como? Okay, if there's no more questions, yes, Mr. Lozol.
What company monitors those meters?
The-
The company that monitors and checks the meters?
Well, we have the company MPC.
MPC.
Who was contracted through the town to service our boilers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Alrighty, number B, letter B, school handbook, Southbridge Middle High School.
Mr. Leach is here this evening to present the changes to the, actually, the new middle high school student handbook.
Good evening. Before I begin tonight, I'd like to welcome the two newest members to the school committee and to tell you that I look forward to working with you, both and the committee as a whole, for the benefit of our children. I was asked to step in and pinch-hit to present the middle high handbook as both principals were not able to be with us tonight. There are some 15 changes that took place in the consolidation of the two handbooks into one. I want to pick out some of the more significant of those to speak about tonight, and then if you have questions about those or any others, I'll be happy to try and answer them or redirect to someone who might have more expertise. As far as the significant changes that I mentioned, pardon me, a new mission, vision statement was created that is more aligned to current district initiatives as well as the school improvement plan. The attendance policy was revised to reflect mutually agreed upon conditions as well as applicable state laws. The marking system, the weight of a full year course was slightly altered to reflect each quarter counting for 22% over the previous 20%, and final exams counting for 12, which was previously 10, for a total of 100%. Our students will be happy to know that there have been some changes in the dress code. We've actually been in discussion about this for the past school year. And as, and the students knew at the end of last school year that moving into the new building, that the hoodie policy was going to be rescinded and hoodies would be able to be worn during the school day. But obviously, we don't want them, the hood worn overhead and hats and things of that nature. Any hooded garments are not to be worn overhead. Along with that, we changed the policy regarding backpacks and book bags. Those will be allowed to be used during the school day as well. And finally, the list of inappropriate behaviors and IDed consequences was removed in lieu of a basic code of conduct with consequences given progressively and at the discretion of administration and by law. In the past, this policy was sometimes referred to as the bump policy, and we feel that it's a more effective tool dealing with the students, grade six through 12 at this time. So I think, any questions about any of that or anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Is there any questions?
I have a question, point of information, I guess.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, just remind the new people.
Is it appropriate to discuss the handbook and its content right now or upon a motion to vote it in?
You can ask your questions now to Mr. Leach. If you want to clarify anything with Mr. Leach, you can ask those questions now.
Okay, I'll ask a couple of questions and then I do have some comments, general to all the handbooks. But one of the things I want to ask is, is this school a peace builder school? I ask that only because all of the three other handbooks in the district have included information about the Peace Builders program, and there's nothing in this handbook that alludes to that. I think the short answer is no, but in spirit, I think that it is because I do agree with the concept of it, but in name, we've, we haven't labeled it that way. But the, the, what Peace Builders advocates, we will advocate as well. I'm going to hold off until-
All right, is there anyone else who would like to ask questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leach, for coming this evening. My first question was maybe just a general observation. The very front cover of the handbook says student handbook. Our other handbooks say student, parent or guardian, and I didn't know, should a parent or guardian name be on the handbook or is this directly for students only?
As you see it now, this draft would be the student handbook, but there's also a provision for a teacher handbook. We have not printed a parent handbook along this line, but it's something we could take under advisement, yes.
Okay. Like Mrs. McLaughlin, I have many questions, so while you're here, I'll just keep going. There was no mention about a school council in this handbook, and I didn't know if that was something that this, that the new school was going to want to continue to pursue for the upcoming school year.
We have, for years now, we've had a school council, and I'm sure that won't change. If it was omitted, then I would say that that was probably an error that needs to be rectified.
Okay. The address, I couldn't find the address in here.
132 Torrey Road.
Neither can a lot of the delivery people that come to the old high school, by the way.
It wasn't mentioned anywhere.
The address is 132 Torrey Road.
Okay. Thank you. Just a point of information, page two had a mention of the school committee members for this school year, and it reflected the old committee or, you know, the prior committee from the school year of 2011 to 2012. I know that other handbooks had been updated and I wasn't sure what the protocol was of what current school committee name should be in this existing handbook.
Obviously, before it goes to print, this is-
So we still in draft?
Is a draft.
Okay.
Before it goes to print, we purposely waited until after the elections to reflect the accurate committee.
Okay, that's perfectly fair. Another question, if you could just, do you have it with you?
I do.
Handbook in front of you. Page three.
Mm-hmm.
The second part of it, the SMHS philosophy, the second item, the bullet item there, "Parents and other family members play a pivotal role in both the academic and emotional development of middle school students," and then it continues on. I didn't know if we should specifically list only middle school students or perhaps include high school students as well. I don't know why we're specifying or relating that statement strictly for the middle school students. I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but-
It should all be middle high school.
Yeah, I think that would be my recommendation that we throw that in there.
I think it's, yes, it should be, yes.
Okay. Oh, maybe perhaps a type, are you in charge of typos? If I point out a typo?
Well, if you've ever seen me type, clearly I'm an expert on it, but I'm not in charge of it.
Okay. Who should I submit the typo questions to?
I would say, submit it to my secretary.
Okay, that's fine. Just a general question. On page 50, we talk about phys ed that will only be for, or requirement for grades six through 10, and that's just a question in general that I had. Is that, once you're a junior or a senior at the high school, do you no longer need to take phys ed as a required course?
By law, no.
Okay.
But we have had, in the past, we've had an elective program for upperclassmen, and it has been popular. And I'm assuming that that will continue to be offered on an elective basis.
Okay. How about a staff list? Our other handbooks have a list of staff members who will be in that building for the upcoming school year, and I couldn't find, other than the main office staff and guidance staff, I didn't know if there would be a more involved or the teacher staff personnel.
It has, to my knowledge, it hasn't been in the handbook in the past.
Okay.
But I could see an advantage with it.
I just think it's a great resource for parents if you, you just want to know who's in the building or who's teaching what, or you hear a name, but you're not sure what they teach.
No, I think it's a point well taken, yes.
I think it's important to have a staff list in there.
Yeah, a lot of times it's on a website, but we could certainly work that into this draft, yes.
Okay. And I guess my only other final question would be on page 15 of the, again, of this particular handbook. Under, for the open houses and the parent conferences, the abbreviations are still SHS and WMS for Wells Middle School and Southbridge High School. I just didn't know if those should be changed as well to reflect the SMHS or whatever the new thing is going to be. Okay. Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Principay.
Good evening, Mr. Leach. Will this be translated into Spanish?
Yes, yes it will.
And you mentioned the bump policy being taken out of the handbook, which I am very much in favor of because it was very confusing.
It was very broad anyway. It wasn't specific. It, there was a whole range of consequences with it. And what we're doing is a more, I think, a more appropriate way of dealing with student discipline.
And I also see, I did, I did check it against our own policies and they seem to align in our, you know, our big district policies, so they do seem to align with those.
This, this handbook was, was actually formulated a little bit different because the two building principals really worked on this and, and I, I did not have an active role in it. And I had, I did have some concerns in presenting it. If, if any of my answers were awkward, I apologize. I, I want to thank Mr. Bishop and Mrs. Allen for giving me, you know, copious notes and preparing me as best they could. I'm familiar with the handbook, but the consolidation, less familiar with, with the middle school handbook, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more questions for Mr. Leach? If none, thank you, Mr. Leach.
Thank you.
Very much. C, school handbook, West Street School.
If I may suggest, the West Street School and Charles Street School handbooks are identical.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Montigny actually has worked on both of them and actually, we just adopted what his, what his was for the both buildings so they could be consistent.
Thank you. Good evening, committee members, new members, Mr. O'Leary. The parent-student handbook for Charles Street and West Street Schools have been revised for the 2012-2013 school year to include identical information for students in grades one through five. The handbooks have been updated with input from the school leadership team, staff members and school council members. During the past few years, especially in 2010, the elementary handbooks went through major revisions. Both handbooks have been completely translated in Spanish by the homeschool liaisons. Revisions include the addition of individual school building pictures on each handbook cover rather than the Peace Builder Kids, so we're in line together. The school calendar is included, what, updated in open house, information dates, parent conferences, MCAS testing schedules, including something different for this upcoming school year, Achievement Network interim English language audits and math assessments in grades two through five. Changes to the staff list will occur in addition to new committee members and new telephone numbers on page 7A. Also, arrival and dismissal information has been more informative and expanded emergency cards with the number of students we, we will have at each school. During the first week of school, handbooks will be sent home with all students with signed student, parent-student return acknowledgements, including emergency cards, internet acceptable use policies and image release forms. Our handbooks contain useful information for parents on frequently asked questions, progress reports, marking terms, identified attendance, busing, medical information, school committee policies and students' code of conduct. I took out the bump policy at West Street School to be in line with Charles Street. Both handbooks reference our nationally validated Peace Builder Program. I wanted to, on a positive note here also, that on August 31st, the PTA is sponsoring an open house at Charles Street School from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. and West Street from 1:00 to 2:30. You're all cordially invited, public, parents, students. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any, is there any questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Montigny.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again. Thank you for coming. One of the questions that I had, and you mentioned it, but I didn't know if you could explain it maybe a little bit more in depth, was what that Achievement Network means or what that is. I had never heard of that before.
Sure.
And I know that in here, it's specifically for grades two through five, but if you could just explain what that is, that would be appreciated.
Achievement Network is a, quite a company. They, from this area all the way down to Louisiana, and they're very professional in providing interim assessments identified to the Massachusetts frameworks, the standards identified. So at the beginning of the school year, our teachers are working hard on curriculum mapping to identify areas that students need to know and standards to be tested at a certain time, being the first time. So these standards will be ready. Students, teachers will be testing towards those standards, which are on MCAS testing. And Achievement Network will come in four or five times a year, I believe, to do interim assessments. I've developed, and West Street School has developed a administrative data leadership team, and we have a person assigned from Achievement Network out of Springfield, Mr. O'Leary, I believe.
Yes.
And they will come in and meet with me, with my data leadership team and discuss the results that we can take back to our data teams to improve instruction and student performance and to identify strengths and weaknesses of students.
And if I could add to that.
Sure.
Achievement Network is paid for through Race to the Top. It is a priority partner identified by the DESE to work with districts in our situation as level four districts to improve achievement. Their focus is on professional development around the data inquiry model and using a common assessment to assess the, the level of growth with all of our students in grades two through eight. They have helped us in grades K-12 already as, as part of getting ready because the data inquiry model we're using in two through eight with them will be modeled also in K-1 and nine through 12 next year.
I'm very impressed with their, their knowledge and their database. They have many schools throughout the country, all the way to Louisiana. They, they work on different areas to improve instruction. And they have assigned the coach to Charles Street and West Street and I believe Wells Middle School of the grade eight, from grades two to eight.
Two through eight, yes.
That's fabulous. I'm very happy to hear that. Just so you know, I know, because a lot of the, the, again, the handbook is, mirrors one another between Charles Street and West Street. I did find a couple of the little typos and Spanish translations of Days of the Week that aren't right, but we can submit that to the superintendent. That's no problem.
You know, Tev, you can give her a call.
One thing that jumped out at me, and perhaps Mr. Wiggins might be a better way to verify this, was on page 18A, we talked about the lunch program, and it appears that the old school lunch prices are still in there. And I don't recall, Mr. Wiggins, when the meeting was, or through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Wiggins, when the school lunch prices were in fact changed, or they all went up a quarter or something like, I don't- a quarter or something like, I don't remember what it was, but I do know that the numbers that are in here don't appear to be correct, so I didn't know if at some point we could verify what the school lunch prices are for the upcoming school year and make those corrections in both handbooks.
Sure. We'll check those.
We may have to include some changes as far as what can be brought to school.
Actually, yeah, we can check those before it goes to print.
Okay.
Yep, that's all. Thank you very much, Ms. Montigny.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was also going to mention the school lunch prices that have increased, but on page thirty-four A, there's a typo on the very top of the page in both handbooks on the English translations. I think if you thumb to page thirty-four.
Sure.
A, you'd see that. It's pretty obvious just to, just to say that. And just so you know, I really liked the frequently asked questions section and the student recognition page. It was a nice way to, I think, end that handbook. So, thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Anyone else with questions for Mr. Montigny? Mrs. Domingo?
I think this might have been an oversight from the previous school configuration, but it appears that Charlton Street School staff list.
Help you update it.
Is still listing grades two and three.
Yes.
And that's going to get, obviously, because the other one is already.
I don't know if I put revised to be revised on time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If no, thank you, Mr. Montigny, very much for coming.
And Mrs. Shaw is here to talk about the handbook at Eastford Road.
Correct.
Good evening. Diane Shaw, Principal, Eastford Road School, and our handbook has a few changes.
Talk into this.
I'm sorry. Our handbook has a few changes. The first of all was the, of course, the new school committee members. Welcome to Mrs. Donovan and Mrs. McLaughlin, and thank you all school committee members for serving our community and our schools. Our next change in our, in our handbook was the staff list. Our staff did reduce, because our first graders have now gone to the West Street and Charlton Street schools, and we will miss them terribly. So that has changed some of our staff list. Again, our corrections have been made for our school lunch price to be two dollars for hot lunch and fifty cents for breakfast, so that was a change in our handbook, along with the school goals to match the accelerated school improvement goals of our curriculum instruction, to have highly quali, high-quality and curriculum instruction, our data analysis and data-driven culture that we are working so diligently up toward, and our professional development for training for our teachers to make sure our students receive the best quality of teaching and instruction, along with our continued efforts and initiatives of having our parents, families, and community involved in our schools. And another's change would have been our bullying policy, just adding more of the, just having the Southbridge School bullying policy and taking out some of the state amendments that were first previously before our district accepted it, was in by the state from the governor. And what else? Our school-based support team has been changed to, changed from our instructional team that was in some schools, the SATs, and in our school ISTs, so our school-based support teams have also been changed. And the end of that, the only other change was our updated school calendar, and I think that's it. Any questions? Does anybody have questions?
Dr. Domingo?
Thank you. How, how many students do you expect to have this coming September?
Around two-hundred-and-eighty. We, I've had the most students for the last two years, and now I'll have the least, from four-hundred-and, and, and eighty now till two, to two-hundred-and-eighty.
And what, what do you expect the ratio of student-teacher is going to be in the building after this reconfiguration?
Well, right now it's about twenty-one to, to two in kindergarten.
That's the upcoming.
Twenty-one students to two, two adults, for the teacher, kindergarten teacher and her parent-professional, and about twenty-one students. Some are a little lower. Our inclusions classes right now have eighteen. Our ELLs classrooms, where their inclusive class as well have about nineteen to twenty. So it, it ranges from eleven to one, eleven to one, two, twelve to one at the most, on the ratio.
Thank you. Just maybe a question to the superintendent. Just quickly going through the staff list, I see fifty-five staff people for two-hundred-and-eighty students. Is that comparable to other elementary school buildings?
No, that's high. That's high. It's, uh, there's a significant amount of, a number of special ed students in there, and it's the early intervention ages that we're trying to get a lot of the help into the building. We did move a number of staff members with the first grade. This building had around a hundred staff members last year.
Yeah, ninety-six, yes.
So it went, it went down about half.
To about sixty, yeah. And we have the PAST program, which have a lot of the children that our needs are.
It's a one-to-one program, yeah.
One-to-one, so those children, our needs are, are higher.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Shaw. Nice to see you.
You too.
I guess my first observation was similar to what I had for Mr. Leach. I didn't see an address in here of a locating of where actually Eastford Road School is, so perhaps we could insert that.
I will, thank you.
The other thing that perhaps, I just want to make sure that we'll go in there, I didn't see a district calendar for the school year, as well as the open house schedule and the parent-teacher conference schedule. It might have been at the very, very last page. It said, insert here or something.
Oh, you got, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had the updated.
Page sixty-six, one available, yeah.
I, I sent it after. I, I, you may have gotten it. I'm sorry. I will give you, it will be in there as it is in this one.
And I just want to make sure that this handbook, will that also be translated into Spanish as the other ones? Is that?
Yes, we have English and Spanish. Both are available to the community.
Okay. And then probably just another note that I'll send along. I, for just the typo, I believe that on the staff list, the new phys ed teacher, I believe, the last name looks grossly misspelled, so we'll just double-check on that.
Cabrera?
Yes.
All right. Let me just check.
Thank you, I'm all set, Mrs. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with any questions for Mrs. Shaw? If there's no further questions, thank you very much, Mrs. Shaw.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda number nine. Report of the superintendent. Mr. Ely?
The elementary organization obviously is coming to a close by necessity. We're ready to, to get, we have kids assigned to classrooms. We have teachers assigned to classrooms. Staffing is changing on a daily basis as people leave the district and we hire new people. But the busing plan is nearly completed. We have not gotten the final plan from the bus company, but they, they have all the information, and we're in constant contact with them as of even today. So we will be putting out bus lists in the middle of the month, and, and obviously put them on the website and get them in the newspaper and, and get the cards out to the, to the parents on the busing. So the elementary organization is, is going well. I would say that we've met the ambitious timeline, and, and obviously we have a lot of work to do to finish, and we have some issues, obviously, that, that West Street we need to take care of with the boiler, boiler down, the boiler room down there, but, and we have a principal to hire, so we, we are on track to be ready to open without any problems.
Next, the accelerated improvement plan update.
The accelerated improvement plan, we submitted benchmarks at the end of June for DESE to consider. Got some feedback from them. At the end of June, Michael Guinan, who was our plan manager, chose not to redo his contract with the state, the ESE, and they have since assigned us a new plan manager. His name is Paul Livingston, and he was with my team yesterday as we went through data, an entire day of data here with the district. Mr. Livingston, Dr. Livingston is a retired superintendent from a couple of districts around the state, and newly retired, and now working for Schoolworks, which is a company that contracts with DESE to do the plan manager piece. So he appears to have a good handle on what we have to do, and what we have to do is by August first, we have to submit a revised plan for the upcoming year. In other words, a new plan has to be submitted, but we don't have to recreate an entire plan. We just have to move the benchmarks based on our results from this year, our preliminary results. So he's working on that as we speak. I, I actually spoke to him yesterday again. He was here, and then emailed him back and forth today some information, so he's working on putting that plan in a form that the state will accept it. So that's due August first.
All right. Dr. Domingo, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I just had a question on the first item, and I apologize for not being fast enough. Knowing that the schools are opening four weeks from now, I would just like to know where the process is for the West Street School principal search?
Yeah, and I have that next, on the staffing updates.
Okay.
I'll, I'll bring up today on that.
Anyone else with questions? All right, we'll go on to staffing updates.
I'll, I'll start with the West Street School principal position. We interviewed a number of candidates. I think we interviewed eight candidates out of a pool of about thirty. We interviewed those, we screened and interviewed at this level a couple of weeks ago, and then last Thursday evening at West Street School, we hosted our staff at West Street School in the library, and any parents who wanted to come, and they actually brought some kids with them, in the cafeteria to meet the two candidates, ask questions of the two candidates, sort of, you know, give them an hour of, of, you know, who are you and what do you mean, and what, what do you want to do for our kids? And then we took feedback sheets into, from them, from all the people who attended, both staff and students, or both staff and, and parents. From that, I have narrowed the search down to one candidate who I am meeting with tomorrow to discuss a contract. So I'm hoping that we'll have a final solution to that tomorrow.
Dr. Domingo?
Yeah, just maybe one at the time, if you're going to go through them. Was there a, a search committee formed for, for this particular search?
There was at the superintendent's level, yes.
What does that mean?
That means I took administrators from the district and the, at the building level, and we did this, we did the screening and the initial interviews.
But there was no search committee like we would do it for other?
There was not a building-level search committee for this position.
Or outside members, or?
No. That was done through the parent forum in the second round.
And where, where was it advertised? I must have missed it completely.
It was in the newspaper. It was in our website, and we did an all-call using the telephone system to parents of West Street students and staff.
To advertise for the principal position?
No, the advertising for the principal position went through the school spring. I'm talking, I thought you meant the forum.
Oh, okay. No, 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 no.
No, the advertising for the principal position went through school spring, which is the system that we use for, for all of our positions.
Okay. Thank you.
And obviously internally as well.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Ely at this time? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the next agenda.
No, I have one more. I'm sorry. I, I, the other one position that we have open is the Director of PPS, People Personnel Services. As you know, Mr. Meyer is retiring for the Director of Special Education. We have kind of revised that position just a little bit by adding to it some, some responsibilities with our nurses and with our guidance program, to develop our guidance program, and so it's changed to a Director of People Personnel Services. And again, we, we advertised that on school spring. We interviewed, actually, two rounds of interviews at the, at this level with, with, again, a representative group from the, from our, from our district. We got through Level One, or the first round of interviews, and had one solid candidate, but we weren't happy with just bringing one person to my level, so I asked it to be re-advertised. We got another pool of candidates, interviewed again, and came up with two other candidates, and then this past week, we met with, it was three finalists, and, actually, it was this week, it was last week, late last week, and interviewed those three people again, and one subsequently withdrew from the search, which left us with two candidates, and I met with a candidate today and talked to her about the position, and we'll be bringing a name forward to the school committee for approval, because this is one of the, one of the positions that the school committee has to approve. That would, that'll happen at the net meeting in, in August, but we're not in a big rush, because Mr. Meyer will not retire until beginning of November.
Thank you, Dr. Domingo.
The same, same question. Was there a search committee for, assembled?
Yes.
Can you tell me the composition of the search committee?
Search committee was administrators, teachers, guidance counselors.
And since, as long as I have been here, and you have pointed it out, it is one of the positions the school committee approves.
Correct.
It surprises me that you did not include anybody from the school committee, or has anybody been included?
There were at the next level, at the last level. There were school, there was a school committee member present. The chair was present.
I was present for the interviews on Friday.
Are we going to receive any, any opinions, any recommendations from, from the school committee member internally? So once recommendations comes up with a vote, it's really, it's a yes or no vote, and I just wonder what kind of, what is that vote really going to represent, knowing that only one person from this body was present at the position that we have to approve as a, as a school committee members?
The school committee actually votes on the recommendation of the superintendent. It is our job to vote, but we go by the recommendation of the superintendent. We can certainly, I don't think it's a problem if you wanted to look at the resume, or we can give the names out of the two individuals so that everyone here can look at them, but ultimately, it's the recommendation of the superintendent to come to us, which, that recommendation will come to us at the August twenty-first meeting, and we will discuss it, and at that time, vote on who we, who, his recommendation.
So based on what you just said, I'm assuming that you will be informing the school committee of the candidate that will be presented?
Yes, I'll send everybody an email on all the information.
Because this cannot be voted on unless we are fully informed that we're voting on it.
Do you get the copy of the resume and all the information?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having, with all this rush this year that seems to be happening, I'm having a problem of, of not really knowing how some of these searches are being done, how the appointments are, and recommendations are being made, and votes in any kind of manner of this become equally problematic for me. So I would like to request that, that a report with original documentation be provided for the candidates who were considered, and in comparison with somebody else. Thank you.
For Director of PPS?
Yes.
Mr. Lazlo?
Just, just a quick question. Did we get any parents on the search committee at all?
For?
Any of them?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, if I see no questions, we'll go on to the next agenda. Agenda item number ten, report of the business manager. Mr. Wiggins?
I hit it underneath here. Very briefly, I'm just handing out for you folks to look at a five-year, actually, it's more than five years. Goes back to two thousand and six. An expenditure history by function. As we put this together for you, as I looked at it, I realized that what we need to go back and actually do is do something by what I call object. I think you folks know more commonly as account as well. That is a much more detailed, because this has to be done manually. So I think it probably won't be your next meeting, might not even be the, an August meeting because of the project and making sure we get everything set to open school on time, but certainly at a September meeting, I think we want to put together the same type of report, only to do it by account as well, same type of history. But this will give you a starting point, sort of a glimpse of how money has been expended since two thousand and six. And then the only other thing I would note for you as you kind of go through this is two thousand and twelve, of course, is still preliminary numbers. There's still some invoices still yet to come in. We're still closing out a few of those accounts, but these are pretty close at this point in time, and of course, we haven't had an audit yet. But again, these numbers should be fairly close between the encumbrances and the actuals for two thousand and twelve as to where we will be.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wigan?
Chairman, just a point of information.
Mrs. Donovan?
Sure.
Being new. Is this just an information that for us to have, or is this something that we vote upon, or is it just to be in the know?
This is, this is information, I think we were, this was, we were providing you a number of pieces of data tonight, and this was a piece of data that we were providing for you, and as we were providing it for you, and I looked at it, and I do apologize, I didn't have more time to devote to it, because I really would have ideally provided you both tonight, but as I looked at this, I realized this is really only half the loaf. You really need to see the accounts as well and see that history, because function tells you sort of the area. It tells you, for example, the history under the area entitled, for example, school committee, or central administration, or principals, okay? But it doesn't tell you, for example, those individual account lines within there.
Right.
And that's the other piece that you really need to make this kind of make sense altogether. And so we'll get that to you within a month's time, so that you can put the two pieces together, and you'll have that history. And it's a good history, frankly, to have as you go into the next budget season.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a reason we are receiving this today, and it wasn't provided in a packet?
Frankly, I was on vacation, and I kind of came back, and there was a lot of project stuff going on, and I did not get a chance to get this prepared for your packet. I apologize.
So, so it might be better to really hold off on this document until the other one, the more comprehensive is provided?
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
Before we discuss anything?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Number 11, School Committee Actions. A, Vote to Approve the Southbridge Middle High School 2012-2013 School Handbook. Is there a motion? We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
And we have a second, is there any discussion on the Southbridge Middle High School Handbook? Dr. O'Leary?
We did, um, do a bit of an overview of a number of corrections that needed to be made, yes?
Yes, we do have some corrections.
Should we be amending this to as amended, or should we wait until the corrections are done? You know, we spent a lot of time, fellow members spent a lot of time, anyway, articulating all these, taking time going over it, articulating the, the mistakes. It would seem that we ought to, you know, back up a little bit, let it get done, and do a quick review and make sure there's nothing else before it goes out to the public. Once it's out there, it's out there.
All right, Mr. Ely, when do these have to go to, to be printed, to be out in time for the public, please? Will we be able to bring it back up at our next meeting on August 21st with all the corrections?
They would not be ready for day one, most likely. We, we, I mean, I'll, I'll take, let me take that back. We would have to probably pay extra to have them done in a, in a speedy fashion, if we wanted to try to wait to have them approved by the 21st. I, I will say that there are a number of changes that need to be, additions that need to go in, the addresses and staff lists and the translations and those kind of things, and typos that will need to be fixed. Traditionally, that happens when we go through the printing process. We do a lot of this stuff in-house with Mr. Knibl, so a lot of those things would be fixed as we catch them, and if, obviously we know they're there, we fix them quickly. So as amended, you know, if you want to wait, we wait till 21st, then we probably have to pay extra to have them done, if we have them done commercially. Some of these are done commercially, other ones are not.
Dr. O'Leary?
Not to, the intention is not to slow things down, just to make sure things are accurate, guys. So if, if as amended is, is appropriate, just so it comes out accurately, guys, don't want to redo it.
Okay, so you want to put out an amendment?
No, I'm just throwing that out there for the committee.
We would have to have an amendment, I believe we have to have an amendment stating, depending on the corrections, or however you want to state that, vote to approve the school committee, Scott, Southbridge Middle High School 2012-2013 School Handbook with changes, changes made. I'm not sure, Mr. Lozlo, how can we make that amendment?
The problem is, an amendment has to be specific to the amendment of Mrs. Donovan's liking on some of these issues, not so much the typos. The typos will go to print, it'll be proofed, and then it'll be corrected, I would hope, as, as we discussed. But the specifics have to be in the amendment. That creates a, a problem, because I think amending it is very important, because some of the points that you brought out is very valid. But you can't say as amended, because what, what this motion signifies is you're accepting this as written. And if you say as amended, then it's gonna, that, there is no amendment, because we don't know what those amendments are, and there's not an amendment in front of us, so.
I'm sorry, stop.
I think we have a dilemma as far as, I think we should take our time and do it right.
So the other option would be to have a meeting between, between now and 21st, and try to push it up to the beginning of August. You know, and, and make some changes based on the input that we got tonight, and input that people would send us over this next few days. You just don't have a lot of time. If you wanted to wait till, give me a date, the, the, I don't know what the calendar looks like, so. The, what's the second week in, the second Tuesday, the 14th?
I think it's the 14th, I don't have the calendar.
If you wanted to wait till the 14th, that gives us another week.
Yes, the 14th.
That's an option. I mean, we're still gonna really hump to get it done, but we'll do this, we can.
Yes, that would be the 14th of August.
Madam Jim?
That's, that's a week before our next meet, our next meeting, which is the 21st. Yes, Mr. Lozlo?
Could we, um, next year, could we have a mini-committee of some sort, or somebody to overview the document appointed by the school committee? And I think that if, if these issues were to come up before the meeting, they could have been corrected and then presented as completed. I wish the school committee would probably have a little input with the administration. Not that we want to write the handbook, but would like to see it done correctly and to cover all the faults of, of the committee.
Yes, I think that actually would be, that'd probably be a good idea, so that we're not running into this last minute and actually costing us more money to print it, because we're waiting for corrections.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McLaughlin?
In going through all these, these handbooks, and it's obvious that a lot of hard work and time has gone into them, and I certainly absolutely appreciate that. However, there's a lot of inconsistencies in these handbooks, even with the way their policies are written. I, next year, would really like us to move towards a district student handbook, whereby each individual school, if they have policies that are unique to them, could either prepare a mini-handbook for that school, or pages inside the school, inside the handbook separately. I'll give you a couple of examples. If I'm a parent who has a child at Eastford Road School, West Street School, and the New Middle High School, attendance is written differently, there are different missions in some of those handbooks that are not necessarily unique to that school. It's just some of the district mission statements are different than others, and I think some may be more updated than others, and there's a lot of confusion there. And I'd like to see some consistency overall in that. For example, in Eastford Road School, the section on bullying is eight pages long, but in the Charlton Street and West Street handbooks, it's three-quarters of a page. I just think it's very confusing as a parent, and as a district, if we want to start getting on the same page, not that we want all schools to be homogeneous necessarily, but to have some consistency for families, so that they're not like, wait a minute, what's the absenteeism policy at the high school? Wait, that's not the absenteeism policy at the, you know, elementary school? I think that's very confusing. I'd like to see ultimately us work towards that. In addition to simple things like putting contents in alphabetical order. If I'm a parent that's going to look for a policy, oh, what's school lunch? I have to read through the table of contents and thumb through it, and I think that could be done in order. Some of the handbooks take the actual school committee policy on a certain area, and just cut and paste and put that in the book. Others kind of paraphrase the policy. It's all over the place. And again, I know that it's late in the game to be making these suggestions or revisions, but for next year, I'd really like to see that something that is addressed.
Thank you. Dr. D'Amico?
I'd like to make a motion to table vote to approve Southbridge Middle High School 1213 School Handbook until our next scheduled meeting.
Target.
Okay, we have a motion out there to table the voting of the Southbridge Middle High School 2012-2013 School Handbook till our next meeting. Is there any discussion?
Could we change that table to postpone?
Postpone, postpone is a better word. I think the phrasing table means exactly the same thing.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
Excuse me?
You can table to a date.
If you do look in the Roberts Rules, postpone is different than tabling. Tabling sometimes, it is, it's the wrong word to use. We should postpone it so that we put a date to it, and that's better than tabling it.
I did put a date to it, you can use whichever word. I didn't ask indefinitely, I said until next regular school committee meeting.
Can we just take a recess, so I can take a look and see which is the proper way of doing it, whether it's postponing or tabling it, please? Like a take a five-minute recess, or just a two-minute recess to, to straighten this out? Thank you.
I'd rather not go through the same process on the, on A, B, C, and D. Can we just amend it to table them, what, however that word's gonna be used, for all of them instead of doing this four more times? Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, can you roll on that? Can we vote on all five motions with the same?
Yes, I believe we can do that to cut time. All right, so, we have a motion on the table, and sec, and seconded, to table the votes on all the handbooks to the next scheduled meeting. So we have a motion and a second.
Correct.
Are there any more discussion on that?
I just, I just want to make sure I know what date, or, I don't want to get hung up on technicalities, but if you say scheduled, are we, are we talking the 21st, because that's on our meeting, or are we going to say the 14th?
Well, we have to have a motion for the next date. If we're gonna change it from the 21st to the 14th, we have to have another motion for that, which we can put down further.
J, it's already in J. So you're gonna approve your schedule tonight in Item J? So when you get to Item J, you can amend that schedule to reflect the 14th instead of the 21st? And that will be the next scheduled meeting at that point.
And it's all?
Mr. Lozlo?
You can call it a special school committee meeting to handle one agenda item, so you don't have to stay here all night. We, we know what we want to do as a school committee, we want to correct that unless there are other issues you want to deal with. But I think if you call it a special school committee meeting for the explicit operations of this, we can actually spend some good time together as far as the, the books, and then after we go through them, and then vote them that night, and that would be a single agenda. I would suggest that when the time comes up, as Mr. Wiggins said.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Mrs. Principay?
Yeah, through you to, to Scott. Then are you, a special school committee meeting for the 14th, and suggesting that we keep the 21st also, or deal with that on, on J?
Deal with that on J.
Okay.
Anyone else? All righty, so we have a motion and a second to table all the voting on all the handbooks to be postponed to the next scheduled school committee meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Lozlo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. And E, Vote to Assign School Committee Members to Sign Payroll Warrants. One needed plus one alternate needed. Do we have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, you're gonna need more than a simple motion, you are gonna need to assign names here. By law, you can have a subcommittee for payroll warrants of one named member and one named alternate. And then that will suffice the law for signing payroll warrants. We'll talk about the expenditure warrants in, in the next action item. The idea of having one person who will regularly come in and sign the payroll warrants is to expedite those warrants being approved. The alternate is, of course, if that person is not available, we would call the alternate, and they would come in and sign.
I'm asking at this time for a volunteer. Is there any volunteers who'd like to be the main person to sign payroll warrants?
I volunteer.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Mrs. Donovan volunteers to be the main signer, and then we will need an alternate. Is there a volunteer for an alternate signer?
I'll do the alternate.
Thank you, Mrs. Principay will be the alternate, alternate signer.
So if your vote, motion can then reflect those two names, that would be great.
All right, so, here we go. So vote to assign school committee members, Mrs. Donovan, as the, the main signer of payroll warrants, and Mrs. Principay as the alternate payroll warrant. Do we, we have a motion and a second already out there, so.
You can withdraw that motion and do another motion with the names.
Yeah, that would be the best way to do it.
Maybe the quickest way.
Okay, so we need to withdraw the motion and start from the beginning, please.
Could I make the motion now?
Mrs. Donovan?
I would like to withdraw the motion of vote to assign school committee members to sign payroll warrants, one needed plus one alternate needed.
Thank you. There's a motion to rescind? No, there's a motion to?
She withdrew it.
Withdraw, okay. So let's start from the beginning. E, Vote to Assign Mrs. Donovan to Sign Payroll Warrants, and Mrs. Principay as the alternate to sign payroll mo, payroll, payroll, excuse me. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozlo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Yes, Mr. Wiggins?
If, if I may, Madam Chairperson, speak to F before we begin a motion. Because again, you will need three people as primary signatories for the expenditure warrants and one alternate. The process here is very similar. These are the warrants that show up under your consent agenda. And again, the law allows you to have a subcommittee of three sign that, and then that shows up at a subsequent meeting on your consent agenda. The process here is a little touchier, because there's a lot of vendors who are waiting for checks. And we, if you remember, back in the spring for the new members, we kind of instituted a new process where we used a three-person subcommittee to sign off on the, on the expenditure warrant. And the idea was that we would have the warrant ready on Thursday afternoon, so that it would be available on Thursday night, up until eight o'clock downstairs. And then either Katie or I come in at seven o'clock in the morning and have it available at seven o'clock in the morning, Friday morning, to try and get those three signature, signatures on that warrant, so that we can, whoops, excuse me, so that we can get it moving, get that process moving, because without those three signatures, we can't get the process moving downstairs as far as getting the warrant reviewed and getting those checks ultimately out the door to the vendors. I think what we did as the initial experiment was the budget, let me see if I can get the name right, the Budget Transportation and Facilities Committee, I don't, did I get them in the right order? Okay, were the three that signed. And I think that's a logical group. I would tell you that other school committees don't always do that. What they do is they look for three members, or, or whatever the number is in their subcommittee, who are local. So this is a decision that the committee needs to make as to what those three members are going to make. And again, like the payroll warrant, you need to have an alternate in case one of those three members is not available. So that is really kind of the decision process you need to come up with tonight, hopefully, as to determine the three members that you want to have sign the expenditure warrants for the next year.
Okay, so I'll be looking, Mr. Lozlo, sorry?
Just to the, to the, the signing portion, we're, we're treating it as much like a subcommittee that will sign the warrants. Then it becomes the consent item, correct?
Correct.
Right. Where I have a problem is not with the three signatures assigned and the alternate, because that is a subcommittee, I'm a big believer in subcommittees. It's referring to the full committee, and I heard tonight, I was, I'm still learning, but no discussion, because it's a consent item.
That, well?
What, what, where my problem lies, Terry, is, is that when a subcommittee recommends to a full committee, it's a recommendation, and you can alter that recommendation. And in parliamentary procedure, I always said that if there's an, an agenda item, you know, they're very, very explicit about what's debatable and what's not debatable, and the consent item, I don't know what I think.
There's absolutely a process for, what, what the process would be, and we haven't really used the consent either, agenda the way the consent agenda is intended, but the way the consent- consent agenda is intended, but the way the consent agenda is intended is that items on the consent agenda would be voted on unless any member wanted to pull something off. And if they wanted to pull it off, absolutely it could be debated. But the idea is if there's no member who wants to debate it, then you would leave it on the consent agenda and simply vote it.
Well, that's the purpose of open government is that when a subcommittee recommends a consent item, that the committee has the opportunity, when the motion and the second, as a committee, to vote the warrant. Because it's only recommended by a subcommittee that we can sit, not that I think anything would happen with these items, Terry, I'm not questioning your intent.
No, no, that's fine.
I'm questioning the process. The due process of keeping government directly involved with the process through right to committee. When subcommittees start doing it without the approval after the subcommittee comes up with a consensus, they report to the full committee. And then all of a sudden, it should be altered by full committee if wanted, you know?
My suggestion would be, and I'm happy to do it, if the, if the committee does not want to have a consent agenda per se, because consent agendas frequently contain not just these items, but minutes and all kinds of things. And then the committee members who want to debate something will pull that item out. So, it's only something that needs to be debated is pulled out. But if you want to have those all available to debate at any time, simply get rid of the term a consent agenda and we'll just put it as warrants.
Madam Chairman, through the chair, the, the school committee on the ed reform, on the mass ed reform is explicit on two things. We do policy and we do budget. And to me, when it comes to the financial portion, I wouldn't take that away from the committee to have the opportunity. Do I think anybody is going to do anything? No. But if there is an item on there that somebody wants to question, now you say, can we just pull this item off the warrant?
Absolutely.
We have questions about this. This is not appropriate or we think it's not right. You know, we have the opportunity to look at the warrants and then after to say, geez, you know, this one warrant, I'm going to vote them through, but I want to amend it. We have the ability. But if there is no discussion, then it's basically taking our duties away, so to speak.
And again, on the consent agenda, any member always has that right. They don't even need a second. They would simply say, I have questions about warrant number forty-eight, okay? And it would immediately just be pulled off. We would put it under, I believe it goes under new business, and we would discuss it under new business. And questions would be asked, and if they couldn't be answered, we wouldn't vote on that warrant.
I just think the consent item is a dangerous item for government.
That's, that part of it is an easy part to go away if the committee is uncomfortable with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess now at this time I would ask for volunteers. Are there any volunteers who would like to be able to sign the expenditure warrants? I need three and an alternate. Is there anyone?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin. I will also volunteer. I need one more person.
I'm local most of the time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lozo.
I'll be an alternate.
And thank you, Mrs. Principay. F, vote to assign Mrs. McLaughlin, Mrs. Woodruff, Mr. Lozo as three members of the committee to sign expenditure warrants as needed plus Mrs. Principay as an alternate. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Principay, second by Mrs. Donovan. Do we have discussion? Any discussion? Dr. Domingo.
I, I just wonder, Terry, if you could remember during your tenure here with us, when was the last time anybody from the people who are signing any of the warrants has challenged the line item? Or had questions about the line item? Ever?
Yeah, I've had, I haven't had many questions. I think I've had four questions, as I recall, that I've had people ask me, what is this?
Anything significant? Like half a million dollars?
Three of the four, three of the four, I believe, were tuition questions. Because those are usually fairly substantial bills.
As a result of those questions, has ever anything needed to be corrected?
No.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If none, can we have a roll call, please?
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. G, moved that the Southbridge School Committee authorized the school business manager to enter into a fair market value lease agreement with Expert Laser Services Incorporated of Southbridge, Massachusetts and/or the leasing company that Expert Laser Services Incorporated uses in the amount not to exceed $1,403.97 per month for a term not to exceed thirty-six months for the purposes of leasing a high-speed black and white copier and a high-speed color copier for the Southbridge Middle High School. This lease is in accordance with Massachusetts State Purchasing Contract OFF-32. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Dr. Domingo, seconded by Mr. Lozo. Any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. Through you too, Mr. Wigan. I just didn't know if you could just take a quick moment to just give me some information of what the Massachusetts State Purchasing Contract OFF-32 actually is.
It's actually commonly called the copier contract. Virtually every copier company in the state is on that. I basically invited probably about a half a dozen different copier companies, including our current vendor, to make proposals. Expert Laser, who frankly, I didn't know about till I came to Southbridge, came in, made a very effective proposal, and frankly, also had the best machine, I thought, both in its consumer ranking, the speed of the machines that I wanted to put in there, how they tie in to the graphics program that we're offering, how they'll be able to produce the type of things we want to be able to produce. We talked about these booklets tonight, being able to do things like saddle stitching, the booklet covers, those types of things in the future. They really presented a very good program for us. The fact that I can literally walk to them, I thought was an added plus. So, I'm pleased to present their proposal tonight. And frankly, they were also the most cost-effective.
Thank you. Just one more question. The $1,403.97, that's the actual lease agreement itself, does that include toner or is toner will be above and beyond that?
It does for both machines for the first year, for one machine for all three years. For the color machine in years two and three, we will be responsible for some of the supplies, but not all of the supplies. That's typical for color machines.
I know sometimes toner can be very expensive. That's why I was asking.
Yeah. It's still a very low cost per copy. It's, I want to say it's under three cents per copy. Or maybe it's 3.2 cents per copy, somewhere around there. Given the color copying a few years ago was like seven cents a copy, it's come down quite a bit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If there is no further discussion, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. H, vote to reorganize the middle and high school administration to create a new position of principal of Southbridge Middle High School. Job description has been attached. Everyone should have had it. And three assistant principals for the Southbridge Middle High School, thereby abolishing the current positions titled: Southbridge High School Principal, Southbridge Middle Mary E. Wells School Principal, High School Assistant Principal, and Middle Mary E. Wells School Assistant Principal/Dean of Students. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, please?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion, Mrs. Principay, seconded by Mrs. McLaughlin. Any discussion? Mr. Lozo?
There's a long history behind this item. Approximately ten years ago, I was appointed to the building committee. We've dealt with three different superintendents, numerous administrators through the years. In the construction process, what we've done is we've built two separate buildings for two separate administrators. And if you go to the school and you look at the construction of it, it was studied heavily by Dr. Hanley, myself, and various other people. We've had other towns try to go to one, then they came back to two. And, and I'm a very big advocate of two administrators. We've, we've ran into problems with dean of students already. We've, as a school committee, we agreed to have a dean of student Wells to try it out, see if it would work. And we're getting rid of this, this dean of students that we have there. And from what I'm understanding, it was told, it didn't work very well. One of the problems was when it came to evaluations that dean can't evaluate, where the assistant principal, say this, assistant principal, principal, when you do evaluations, teachers, they do work hand in hand doing the job of, and it's a big job to, to evaluate your whole building. There are numerous, numerous things and reasons, and I don't want to beat it to death. I know that we had a meeting before and we voted against it. I think it's a very dangerous thing to do at this point, going into a building and we're taking out two of the people that actually were very instrumental architecturally with the pod system, with the actual, the alignment with the curriculum and stuff that's supposed to go on with the technology, and the layout of the whole building and use. In thirty days before we enter the building, I think it's going to be detrimental to our system. Of course, that is my opinion. And other people have other opinions and I respect them. But the thing is, we always thought going into this building was to be stable. We have staff that is very unstable right now and wondering what the future is. We hear that the principal's already been picked for the, for the position. It's going to be Tammy Perrow, we hear. So, and, and with all the shuffling that we're having, we're not having a lot of parent input. We're not having search committees like we did in the past. It's been almost operating in a vacuum. Hurry up, let's get it done. What shocked me is we had five, three or four, we had the sped director, curriculum coordinator, fifth grade, and then assistant principal at Mary Wells. And when you have about four holes or five holes in your boat, and you want to create more holes in the boat in a seventy-six billion dollar school that you're going into, you're not giving your staff and a lot of the parents a lot of confidence of, geez, you know, I know the kids, you know, I have a child in high school and the big talk is, what's going to happen with us? So, I, I know when you're sitting at the top and you're an administrator, you just say, well, that's the way it is. It's going to work. Don't worry about it. I've been in government twenty-eight years, twenty-nine years, and I've heard this and I've seen this, and it's a step in a dangerous area. And, and, you know, if you step into that area, you're taking a chance. I know that if we turned around and went into the building with our, with our principals, we know that we can do the transition, move in. If, if a year or two from now, something is not working, the thing that kind of stuck with me was when Mr. Ely announced that we went from level two to level one at the high school as far as underperforming. And then we turned around and the graduation rates up, and our MCAS scores are moving in the right direction. And I'm sitting there saying, it's working. Why are we operating in a vacuum at this point? The only thing we need is more time with our accelerated turnaround plan. And I really believe that the foundation's been built by the previous superintendent and the structure's in place. And I think that, you know, overhauling everything halfway through and when you're almost done with the project, you're ready to hand the keys over and the indecision and the I-don't-knows and all of what we're going to create is going to be detrimental to our school system. I could be wrong, but I just, after the years of experience I've had with superintendents and different people that come into the system, I'm sure their intentions are genuine. Maybe they want to do it a certain way. It's great. And then the next time, the next latest and greatest comes in, we've seen curriculum coordinators come in, put everyday math in.
Mr. Lozo or?
I'm just giving you the...
We're getting, I know, but we're getting a little off.
Oh, I'll wind it up. The example is, when someone comes in and creates a program and says, this is what's going to work for you, Southbridge, and then all of a sudden, we say, oh, great, we embrace it, we do it, and then it fails. Now, we're going to get out of it. This is one of those times I feel real strong that when we move in this direction, I think we're going to be sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Principay?
I would, this did come before the school committee, the previous school committee, I think, last December. And actually, it was tabled. It was not voted down. I wanted to correct that. But for the sake of new members, through you to Mr. Ely, new members on the board, and for the public, could you speak to this issue and justify the one principal for the middle high school?
Well, my belief all along has been, and I proposed this back in October, actually, my belief all along has been, it's one building, one principal. Whether you run a middle school program and a high school program, and whether it's one accountability or two has always been a question. I've gotten different things from the state. I got something else from Linda Foizie today, the assistant commissioner, on this, that issue. But ultimately, the overall administrative structure of the building has always, in my mind, been built for one principal. So, I respectfully disagree with the concept of having two principals in one building. I spent two hours Sunday walking the entire property at 132 Torrey Road. And every time I looked back at the building, I saw one building. Every time. I didn't see two buildings. I saw one. I saw one school. I saw a building that needed a leader with a vision that an entire staff can buy into and an entire student body can buy into and strive for over the next seven years for the sixth graders, for seven years that you enter that building. I saw a building that sits in an area that's rather remote, that if something happens, as has been brought to me a couple of times, who's going to be in charge? That's going to be a question if you have two leaders, not if you have one. And my fundamental belief always has been, as a, as an educator, that one leader is always better than two when it comes to leading a building. The research has shown that the critical part of building success is one strong building instructional leader. And that's what I believe in.
Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess in general, as a part of discussion, nobody in particular. We are four weeks, probably not even, from opening a new building. And the least, my feeling is that this is an irresponsible move on the part of administration. Unless we are provided with the name of the person who will lead the opening of the new building in four weeks, and the new bus system, and the new everything that's coming down the pipe, I am not willing to support this motion in any denomination. I agree completely with Mr. Lozo that having an established leadership team at two buildings, moving them in parallel into a new setting, it is the smartest thing that we can possibly do. I do, again, agree as well with Mr. Ely that eventually, probably, a building of this kind of complexity would probably operate, eventually, critical word being eventually, operate under a single person. We're not even close to being there. The door has not opened. I think it's an irresponsible move to be moving eleven hundred students into a new building without us knowing who's going to be leading this building. And I wonder if anybody else on this panel feels comfortable supporting this plan in the absence of knowing who this, this leader that I assume Mr. Ely has in mind, because he better, we're four weeks away, and if he doesn't, then I'm really nervous. And Mr. Ely said that he needs a leader that the staff can buy into. And I would really like you to identify for us how you envision this happening with whose leadership. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Dr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to take a couple of minutes with my own trepidation on this kind of decision. Mr. Ely, actually, thank you for bringing back the Friday, October 28th, 2011 superintendent's report, because I did not remember just when it occurred. A number of things. During that meeting, I remember specifically asking you, what was it that the state had During that meeting, I remember specifically asking you, what was it that the state had as issue about one principal versus two? You couldn't really articulate that, but you did comment something about an address, something, well, I still didn't have an answer, so you just sort of left it. But the impression was, the state had all but dictated that it should be one principal, that's it. And that's where you left it. Fast forward to just a couple months ago, we had the state here, and one of my colleagues, Mr. Lazo, specifically asked the question. And at that time, the representative of the state did not weigh in as to what should be this way or that way, it was up to us to do it, it has succeeded in both fashions. The problem I have is that, that, I feel like, what you told me, as articulated in here, mostly, was misrepresentation to me and the school committee and the citizens as to what the state dictated as to how we had to do things. So, to me, this, I have very little, I have very little trust in reference to this decision and how you've come to it. I really do. I wonder what other motives may be in mind. That's number one. Number two-
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes, ma'am?
Motives, can we keep those kind of words out, because it's not really appropriate?
Surely, I take that back. Strike that. Number two, as pointed out by a number of colleagues in the past, history is really important. Mr. Lazo just brought up, ten years ago, he was brought onto the school building committee. And that took a lot of planning, he had to bring it to the citizens, the parents, the citizens, students, administrators, and all the time, it came as, it came as a deal with two principals, with two different entities, for the last, well, nine years. This is how it was presented to us, the taxpayers, the citizens, the students, I can keep on going, over and over again on it. And here in the eleventh hour, you seem to think it's appropriate to put all that aside, to disregard what we promised the citizens and the taxpayers here, for, as I said, I don't know why, I find it really disturbing that you pursue this, I really do. So, I guess you know where I'm going on it. And I want, I really want, it's really important here in the eleventh hour, that the citizens take note. A lot of hard work, a lot of blood, sweat, tears has gone into this, from the community itself as well, and to just push aside all that we've said, all that we've promised, all that we've done for, as I said, I'm not sure why, seems really, really inappropriate to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Leary. Is there anyone else for discussion? Mr. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to maybe just let people know what I know so far in reaction to Mr. D'Amico's comments as well as Mr. O'Leary's. First of all, it was stated earlier, I believe it may have been Mr. Lazo, that the role of the school committee is policy and budget. So, based on that, I'm trying to think through this process logically. It does not say policy, budget, personnel. If we are looking for a specific name of a person to fill a position, I believe we are not entitled to that name. Number one, that is a personnel issue that is not something that should be discussed in a public forum. Second of all, personnel issues in the hiring of school principals as well as leadership team personnel ultimately is the role and responsibility and authority, as I understand it, of the superintendent. That being said, we talk about the eleventh hour. I can look back at documentation that was given to me in my packet, that this was an issue that was brought up last fall with a prior school committee, and a correction was made that the issue was not in fact voted down, it was in fact tabled. And it is my understanding that if something is tabled, it needs to come off the table and be re-discussed before the next, we'll say, reorganizational meeting, whether new members are part of a committee or not. The fact that that issue stayed on the table past June 30th of this year, it is now a new issue. It's a new day, it's a new committee, it's a new proposal. To say that it's the eleventh hour, I think, is unfair, because obviously, this is something that people should have been thinking about a long time ago as to coming up with the actual administrative configuration of that school. And I have to look at it as totally removing an individual, anybody personal, whether, who they are, I don't even think of people at all in this discussion. My role here is to do what's best for the children in this district. And in doing what's best for the children of this district, I have to look at, in my opinion, what do I feel is best for that school, a school in which, however, my own child will be in. So, while it is a community topic, for me, it's a personal topic, because it affects my child and my family. So, when I look at my rationale for one principal in that building, I, similarly to Mr. Ely, say, I look at it, it is one building. Yes, it has two wings. I am perfectly clear of the layout and the floor plan and perhaps the intention. I was not privy to anything to do with building this school, so I'm not going to comment on, you know, how it was designed. I look at it for what it is, it is one building. And for me to have one or more than one person being in charge just doesn't make sense. It's an accountability issue on two parts for me. The state, and I agree with Mr. O'Leary, I mean with Mr. O'Leary, that they've been wishy-washy. In my opinion, the state at one point did say, we need to have one for accountability status relative to our level for accountability. Then Eva Mitchell did clearly respond to Mr. Lazo at the February 14th meeting and said she didn't care. The state doesn't care. I was at a forum last week with Dr. Bonda, the first question that was asked at that forum, what is the state's opinion policy on this new school? Her clear answer was, the state does not care. It is a district decision. So, I look at that, that it's up to us as a school committee, because I assume district decision means school committee and, you know, with the guidance of a superintendent. For me, it's all about oversight in case of emergency. The buck has to stop somewhere. If you have two principals with differing philosophies, at some point, they're going to be butting heads. And if there's a state of emergency and one principal's saying, go outdoor A, and the other one says, oh, I don't agree with that, they should go outdoor B, and I'm at home thinking, what door is my son going out of? There has to be somebody at the top for that. And I think that as long as there's a process that's in place to selecting the best candidate for that, that's important to me. I want to protect the integrity of the selection process if this is a forum that, or a configuration that we think is best for the district. I have questions for Mr. Ely as far as who will actually do what. We have job descriptions, but they're still not clear specifically who will take care of what wing and different things like that. I guess the bottom line for me is, what I, basically, after all that, what I just want to say is, I'm here to do what's best for all students. And in my opinion, we need to take the personnel issue out of it. We're looking at policy, we're looking as a district, what is the best configuration at that new school on all levels? And for me, it is having one captain and one chief in one building. Thank you.
I believe Dr. D'Amico was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mrs. Donovan, I am really surprised and a little disappointed that you don't see through the policy and budget responsibilities that we have, the content of charting educational policy and its execution as this district is a vital responsibility of the school committee. That is just absolutely unbelievable to me. This is one of the most important things that we have done in this town, is come up with a building for a middle and high school. The vote we're going to take today is going to determine to a large extent where and how we move into our middle school and high school education and how successful we can be. And to think for a minute that that is a personnel issue is, to me, insulting. As this being long in the making, maybe Mr. Ely can update us on the process that he has undertaken in his effort to convince us how this is really better for our district, that he has taken to establish this leadership group that will convince me and fellow colleagues who may have questions, that this would be a smart decision for us.
Are we all set? Dr. D'Amico? Okay, Mrs. Principay, please.
Yes, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Ely. One of the previous speakers, and I believe it was Mr. Lazo, spoke to the position of dean of students that was at the middle school, and I believe he said it didn't work out because that individual could not evaluate teachers. So, I assume that person was in there as more or less a disciplinarian. I would like, Mr. Ely, for you to expound on the three, with one principal, the three assistant principals or vice principals, whatever they're going to be named, their roles, responsibility.
Sure. The responsibilities of the assistant principals broadly are to support the initiatives of the building principal, to monitor student behavior, to perform assigned tasks based on their level of expertise in certain areas. I can envision a number, depending on who those people are, a number of scenarios where the three assistant principals would divide up the seven grades. You could have a six, seven, an eight, nine, and a 10, 12 assistant principal. You could have different people taking different departments in terms of observation and evaluation of staff. The reason that I sort of abandoned the idea of dean of students was really because of the new educator evaluation framework that the state has been working on for at least a year now, in terms of getting it out and talking to us as administrators about the paperwork involved and the time it takes to do those things and the amount of administrative personnel it's going to take to do those evaluations. So, I sort of abandoned the idea of the dean of students because of the level of work that needs to be done with eighty staff members to get involved in the new evaluator framework and to make sure that we do it properly. So, the assistant principals basically support the principal, and they would work together as a leadership team for the building to make sure that we're going in a common direction with a common message based on the vision of that leader and bring the staff together in a positive direction.
Mr. Lazo?
I agree with Mrs. Donovan a hundred percent about personnel is not our job. The thing is, this policy and structure is our job, and I do want the best for our When the superintendent said he was walking away from the building and looked back and saw one building, obviously, he wasn't looking at the building on how it was constructed. We've constructed two separate schools under one roof, two totally separate schools. If I took you on a tour and I showed you, which are two different concepts. We have the middle school concept, which a principal, which I've been on search committees for, has always looked for the middle school concept, the team teaching. You go to the high school, and that's a different concept. And then we're going to add, when you have two different concepts, two different buildings, you walk up to the building, it says, middle school, high school. The reason why we went with this concept was centralized services, to save the taxpayers some money. It wasn't to get one administrator, and the studies show, oh my God, Dale Hanley and I looked at these studies, and we saw towns that went to a single, that the next year they went right back, and it was caused a lot of chaos, but they went right back to two administrators. And I sit back here today and I look at it, and if you go into this building, anybody that's taught it, anybody with an ounce of common sense looked at this building and said it's one building, doesn't know what they're talking about. There's two different entrances, there are two different buildings, complete buildings. The pod system, one through six on the first, I mean, the sixth grade is on the first floor, seventh grade is on the second floor, and the eighth grade is on the third floor. You go over where the freshman academy is, the parents of this district didn't want their sixth grade kids with 12th grade kids. So, we said, let's build two separate buildings. And that's what we promised these taxpayers, and they're paying the freight on this. And when I look at the whole counterpoint of what you told the people, I don't worry about it. As an elected official, I think that nobody knows that building better than I do with the guys that constructed it with their own hands. And I look at it and I take the personalities and put them aside. What is in the best interest of Southbridge? Ten years of studies showed that this is the best interest of Southbridge, not by Scott Lazo, by Julian Austin, by Dale Hanley, by different principals that have come and gone, the experts that we brought in in the early stages to find out what concept, should we be doing this? Everything gave us the green light to build two separate buildings with centralized services. We just went through a big battle over the school nurse. They constructed two nurses' offices. The assistant principal in either building on the second floor with the disciplinary problems, you're going to tell me that one dean of students or assistant principal is going to handle eleven hundred students' discipline? You have one down at Wells that can't even control the discipline that we need. We need more of that when we talk about curriculum, the overlap of the curriculum.
Mr. Lazo, I'm sorry, but this is becoming a debate.
Madam Chair, you are out of order. There was no motion to limit the discussion on the motion.
There does not have to be a motion to limit the discussion.
Yes, there needs to be.
That's to be a point of order.
Yes.
There's not supposed to be a debate going on.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
We're going on a debate.
In closing, the only thing I want to do, this is passionate, it's near my heart, I spent ten years traveling the state. We have a curriculum team at ELA, mathematics. We're going to add a curriculum person, an assistant principal of curriculum. More bureaucracy, more distance, more buffers, more this? No. What we have is working. If it's not broke, don't change it. We're heading in the right direction. Teachers are the most valuable people on curriculum. We need another person to tell a teacher what to do? We've got them on a revolving door now, what to do. Madam Chairman, thank you very much for being patient.
You're welcome, Mr. Lazo. Is there anyone else for discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. O'Leary?
Through you, Madam, to comments by Ms. Donovan. If you go back to ten years, and then you bring Mr. Ely in, in the eleventh hour, just year by year, that's about the eleventh hour, hon.
Mr. O'-- Dr. O'Leary, please.
We have--
Dr. O'Leary, please watch what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Hon is not bringing up here.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We have discussed this from the start, ten years ago, we started discussing this. Ten years ago, we brought this to the public. Ten years ago, this was constructed in a way. So, please, do not bring up, this should have been discussed earlier, this was discussed at the outset, you may not have been part of it, but it was discussed at it. And finally, I have three children going there. The number of children you have going there does not dictate how much, how involved you are in the system.
Dr. O'Leary.
If that were the case, then I guess there's a hierarchy here. So, please, don't bring up that. My child will be in this system.
Dr. O'Leary, enough now. This is going--
Thank you for your time, Madam Chair.
You should be going through this chair. Thank you. You're welcome. Mrs. McLaughlin?
Hi, thank you. In researching this issue, I did a number of things. One of the things I did was I looked at the school districts in Massachusetts that have combined middle, high school in the same building. How were they configured? I found about fourteen of them. Adams, Avon, Carver, Chatham, Cohasset, Georgetown, Granby, Ipswich, Lee, Millbury, Quabog, Webster, West Wilson, West Bridgewater, and Wichita. All but one of those have one principal. All but one of those have, what am I trying to say here? All but one of those have the structure in place that would be a high school principal, high school vice principal, middle school principal, middle school vice principal. They have all made a decision that you can't have two dogs walking the same leash. There are reasons for one principal that I could research and cite include accountability of day-to-day operations, DESC oversight, crisis and emergency management, philosophy, it is unwise to have competing philosophies on instruction, discipline, those kind of issues. The argument that people have made to me publicly in the grocery store, have called me, have emailed me about, interestingly enough, and even occurred here tonight, is they said, eventually, we do think there needs to be one principal. Eventually, but just not now, there's so much turmoil. Agreed. Agreed. There's a lot going on in this district. But the fact of the matter is, as of today, we do not have-- But the fact of the matter is, as of today, we do not have a middle school principal or a middle school vice principal. So actually, this might be the ideal time to make that move, because then you're not going through a process of bringing people and saying, "Eventually." What does eventually mean? Does eventually mean six months from now? Does eventually mean a year from now? There's a lot going on. This is not ideal time. Frankly, I'm ticked off that the previous school committee didn't take this issue up, didn't take the item off the table and vote it one way or another, because now it falls into this committee's lap to deal with this issue. And it could have been, quite frankly, voted down, and that would have been the end of it, and we would be looking at something else. That was not done. You need to, not you, I don't, in general, I contacted the Mass Association of School Committee, I went on the DOE website. What is our role here? Our role here is clearly policy. It is clearly removing the thoughts of who are going to be in positions from the positions themselves. And that's the truth. And part of that, part of our problem in this district, I also found in researching this issue, is we actually have no district hiring policy. There is no district hiring policy in Southbridge. It's not in, it's not in our policy manual. So again, I went and did a little research. I found other districts that have adopted hiring policies, and how to answer some of these other questions, that have been a problem for a long time in this district, and continue to be a problem. So just as a, a point of information, or as a point that I'd like to make, is that our policy subcommittee needs to get on this real quick. Ultimately, the superintendent, his responsibility is to do the hiring, and deciding who is best for those positions. And I would hope that if this were to be voted, that that process would be done with a lot of integrity, a lot of care, a lot of thoughtfulness, again, in the limited time that we have. We just had a process that unfolded at West Street School, that went very well, that people gave a lot of good feedback on. It would be nice to see something like that. But separating who goes in those positions from the need for the position, I do support one main administrator at that school. I would like the vice principals or assistant principal positions to be more clearly defined for that school. But ultimately, I think this is, unfortunately, the, the cards we've been dealt, and this is, we need to vote on this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin. Is there any other discussion? I see no other discussion. Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
No.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
No.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
No.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Four yes, three no.
Motion passes, thank you. I vote to assign the superintendent, Mr. Ely, as a representative to serve on the Southern Worcester Connor Educational Collaborative. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mrs. Principay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Donovan. Any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Sorry about my point of information, but could you just please tell me what the role of this representative is to serve on this particular collaboration?
The Education Collaborative serves mostly special ed students from sixteen or seventeen different districts, and the superintendent in, I believe, all of those districts serves on a board similar, similar to what you have here, and helps the executive director of the collaborative make decisions. So we actually pass policy regarding the collaborative, how the collaborative operates.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? I see none. Roll call, vote, please.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
No.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Thank you, motion passes. J, vote to approve the proposed school, school committee schedule dated July nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, a motion from Mrs. Donovan, second by Mrs. Principay. Any discussion? Dr. Domingo?
I don't understand the sentence. Madam Chair, can you explain this vote to me, please?
It's to approve the minutes for the rest of the year. You have it in your?
Schedule. I think so, schedule. It's right here.
The, the sentence doesn't mean anything.
Schedule, sorry, not date. Schedule, date to July nineteenth. It's a schedule, meeting schedule. Everybody received it in their packet, I believe?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Principay?
Tuesday, August twenty-first. I'd like to amend this motion to remove that date from the school committee meeting, being one of them. Also, the last one, Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, I think that's always, is that?
That's election day.
That's another election night.
Yes, yes. So you may want to move it to the Monday, the twenty-fourth?
I suppose.
Or remove the meeting?
I, I would, pardon me?
Well, it's the end of the fiscal year, you may need the meeting for some purpose, so.
I would say then move it to the, move it to the day before, which would be the twenty-fourth. Now, do we want to change the twenty, well, we eliminate, my motion is to eliminate the twenty-first, we can put in the fourteenth, and that would be a scheduled school committee meeting, or if people prefer, just make it a committee meeting in the whole. But I would, personally, my, my amendment would be to put in the fourteenth versus, and take out the twenty-first.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we have a motion for an amendment on the table to?
Could you state the, restate the amendment? You're just moving August second meeting to, to August fourteenth?
I'm moving, yes, the twenty-first and fourteenth, and June twenty-fourth of two thousand and thirteen, because it's an election night, to the previous day, which would be the twenty-fourth on a Monday.
So we have a motion to amend the calendar, to change the August twenty-first meeting, to replace it to the Aug-, to August fourteenth, and to remove the June twenty-fifth meeting to June twenty-fourth.
You have to vote that amendment, I mean, I think, it hasn't been voted on yet, so it's not really an amendment, because there's no motion. It could be part of the main motion.
Well, we're making changes, so, we have the motion.
So a motion to adopt the calendar with those two new dates?
Yes. So it's a motion to adopt the new calendar with those changed dates, the amendments to the dates. So we're eliminating August twenty-first, and moving it to August fourteenth, and we're removing June twenty-fifth to June twenty-fourth. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Is there any more discussion on that? Roll call?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Agenda number twelve, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that anyone has this evening? Anyone? Mr. Lozo?
I have just a question. The ad hoc committees of the previous administration, have they just been all dissolved, or the collaborative, the building, the reuse of the maintenance? What has happened to all that? I, I want to apologize, first of all, for missing the reorganization meeting. I congratulate both of the newly elected members, and I'm sure that I'm kind of excited about the new energy and the communication policies and stuff that you were talking about, I saw it on TV. I'm sure we'll learn a lot from each other. But I was concerned about a couple of things. Point one, the ad hoc committees, where are they at, at this point?
The ad hoc committees, because it's a new, it's a new membership, we'll have to re-member, we'll have to make new, new ad hoc committees, as well as the subcommittees, which I did email and ask if anyone was interested in any subcommittee, I did get some responses that will come up to vote with the personnel at the next meeting.
And, and one, one other question, which I, I'm very sorry I wasn't here, the negotiation vote that was taken, I know we got an in-depth conversation here today about policy and finance, I think we're all in agreeance, it's policy and finance. Us giving up, you know, salaries make up between eighty-seven percent and ninety percent of our budget, and you gave up your duties as a school committee, so I thought that was kind of strange. Then I saw a presentation, when I tried to watch the repeat of the meeting, saying, "Well, we want the superintendent, the business manager, and two school committee members," and it was kind of a model, I guess, I was trying to pick up the model. I want the people to know that negotiations was with the superintendent, business manager, which was Courtney Keegan at the time, the school committee members as a subcommittee. So the reconfiguration is, what you're reconfiguring is going back to what we used to do. And the attorney is usually there for the big units, which is usually the, the SEA. All the other ones were usually done in, in, in three or four days. Then it was a discussion, which is just a point of clarification, that the negotiation, subnegotiations cost a lot of money. I think the point of clarification on that was that where the town paid money was more in the violation of the document during the year than the negotiations. The only time we ever had a negotiations that cost us any money, which gave one more percent to the teacher's contract, which meant they got two percent, and everybody in our district got one percent. That was the only time there was any negotiation problem as far as who said he said. You know, it was a misunderstanding, we thought it was this, they thought it was that. So the negotiation subcommittee has, has been paramount as far as no headaches during negotiations. I mean, there, there, there were disagreements, because you expect units to come in and ask for the sky, and you're supposed to defend the taxpayer and the system for a fair wage. But I was hoping that somebody, after doing a little research, understood that maybe, you know, this is your opportunity for a motion to reconsider from the prevailing side, to put this back in place. I mean, who, who becomes the negotiating subcommittee is not important. It's just that the negotiating subcommittee's been there for fifty years, and then all of a sudden, it's gone. And you centralized, again, this is what, you know, the oversight and accountability, and all of a sudden, you centralized the power in front of the office again. Everything's done under one little umbrella. It, it doesn't look very transparent. I mean, the subcommittee always reported to the main committee to finalize the vote. I don't understand where that didn't work, and I just wanted to bring that up on unfinished business. I wasn't at the last meeting, I want to apologize for that, but I really think the school committee should reconsider that, and if you reconsider it, you have to do it at this meeting, or finalize till next session.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. Just for a clarification, we are discussing an executive session.
Oh.
You know, because we cannot discuss strategies out here in the open.
Thank you.
This is not a strategy. Yeah, it's not tonight. Yeah, we have executive sessions.
Madam Chairman?
Thank you, yes.
This wasn't meant to be a strategy. This was strictly process and procedure.
Right, I understand that, but I just wanted to let you know that that is in discussion in an executive session, so we will be discussing. Mrs. Principay?
No, you just, you just said it.
Okay.
About a bargaining strategy.
All right, anyone else with?
Madam Chairman, I'm having a problem. If, if I'm speaking about process and procedure, why are we going into execu-, I think we might be violating the executive session law, unless there's some piece to this that I'm not understanding, because process and procedure's not supposed to be discussed in executive session, it's supposed to be discussed in open session. If we go into negotiations with a particular unit or person, we have to go to executive session. But this meeting here is the last opportunity this year to reconsider, just to reinstate the subcommittee. I mean, then after that, it would be your decision.
If someone wishes to reconsider, they may reconsider. What I'm, what I'm saying is, you, you missed the meeting, so we changed what we were going to do as far as negotiation goes, to a negotiation panel of some sort. That is a strategy we need to speak about in executive session, is how we're going to do that. That's what we're doing this evening.
Okay, I'm just.
But if anybody wants to reconsider and?
Well, before the record, I, I don't think putting a panel together is strategy. Putting a panel together is actually the process. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? We're not at new business, we're still in unfinished business. Is there any more unfinished business? If there are no more, for unfinished business, we're heading into new business, and new business, we were going to have the next school committee meeting on August fourteenth at seven PM in the chambers. And also, at this time, I want to recognize and welcome our two new members. We did not do that last meeting, I apologize for that. So I'd like to welcome and recognize Mrs. Donovan to the left, and Mrs. McLaughlin to the right, this evening, as our new members, and, and welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Mrs. Domingo?
Are, are we all out of money? Can we provide school committee members with a name, name tags?
They're making them. They are making them, they will be here eventually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes, through you to the superintendent.
Yes.
I seem to recall at a prior school committee meeting, there was talk of a, a new website coming on board. Is that still in process? Because just in reviewing the current?
It's still being worked on, yes.
Okay.
We're still, we're still working on closing out, getting the state reports done, enrolling our students over to the new school year, and to the new buildings, and, and then the new, the, the website is actually going to be updated.
Okay. Just because the, the new school building project, the last information on that building project is February two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
So I, my recommendation is either to update it or remove it. Thank you.
Anyone else in new business? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. I would just like to inform the public that there's something that's new and exciting that's starting in the community once again, and I just wanted to let people know that I fully support it. We have some people in the community who are looking to start a booster club in town to support the athletics that will be taking part at our new middle school, high school. And I think it's so important that parents get involved and community get involved to support our athletics up there, and give our middle schoolers an opportunity to learn more about certain sports, so that perhaps by the time they are on the high school side, they are ready to compete, and we can have some, you know, be real competitive, and have kids take pride, and try to restore some pride into, into the, into the athletics up there. And I wanted to just let people know that our athletic director, Brian Davis, in conjunction with Michael Quado, Mr. Jovan, who was our chairman for the school committee last year, as well as citizen Elizabeth Gendrow, will be holding a meeting next Monday, which is July third, at six PM in the conference room. Oh, I'm sorry, August third. No, July thirtieth. July thirtieth. Monday, July thirtieth, six PM, South Bridge Police Department Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further new business this evening? All right, agenda, agenda item number fourteen, school committee reports. Right now, we don't have any committees, we will have those at the next meeting, and we'll vote about the committees, except if Mr. Lozo has any updates on the new building.
Well, the building's on time, on the budget, crunch time. I know the Tuesday, the last Tuesday's meeting was a, was very interesting. It's, it's, it's into the punch list. We're supposed to be, hopefully, we're optimistic, not the seventh, but August third, to get the completion date. Posh completion's going to be on the thirtieth, so the dates are very close. And then after, they're going to do a thirty-day punch list. The punch list has already started, the painters are in there, various things. The building, the lettering went up on the building, and again, that nine-year-old child that said he wanted to say Homer the Pioneer's on the front of the building is up there, it looks absolutely impressive. Just a little short story, Mr. Reno, a former administrator, happened to see me in, in CVS and said, "I wanted to see the school." We took him up there, and, and again, anybody that wants to see the school, we'll do small groups now, like groups of five on a Friday or something, kind of convenient to everybody, but we're, we're full steam ahead, as far as the construction portion and the fields, again, they're gonna, you know, we're not going to be able to use the fields when we first get up there, but we knew that in the beginning. We pushed the schedule, because Sigley did six months ahead, so full steam ahead, I think we're doing fine.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. Agenda number fifteen, executive session, vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel, or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, Part Three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mrs. Principay. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lozlo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Vote to conclude executive session and return to open session. Roll call?
No.
No.
A motion, please?
No. You go into executive session, then just say you'll come back out of executive session to, just for the purposes of a German.